Calling to order, the Monday, December 18th, 2017, regular meeting of the 37th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Boucher, please call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Here.
Councilmember Henin.
Here.
Councilmember Kadakel.
Here.
Councilmember Stedman.
Here.
And Mayor Turbrack.
Still Mayor O'Turbrack here. Thank you.[29.02][29.02][laughter] First order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Move to approve.
Support.
Moved to approve by Councilmember Kadakel, with support by Councilmember Henin. Any changes, additions, corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Blanchard.
Yes.
Henin.
Yes.
Kadakel.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Agenda has been approved. Please stand for the invocation and please remain standing for the pledge with us today is Pastor Adam Grohl.
[unintelligible]. God, we thank you for this chance to gather here for the good of the city and we're thankful for these council members that have gathered and the citizens that we all desire great things for the city, so we thank you for this time. We thank you for the season you've given us, this season that tells us how much you love us and so we just celebrate that together. We're thankful for all that you give us in the city. We thank you for our public safety and the efforts that they give out every single day. Pray your protection on them. Pray your blessing on this meeting. Would you bless the agenda and the efforts, give us humility, give us compassion as we discuss these matters? We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Standing for the pledge.
Our pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We've now come to the citizens' comments portion where you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Councilmembers will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the City, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's desk. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, I'm Dean Smith. I live on Larkmore here in Berkeley. At the Tuesday, December 12 Planning Commission meeting, I made an inappropriate comment that was captured and broadcast on social media. I'm here to tell you the story behind the soundbite. If you haven't yet heard, my comment was directed at the owner of the house immediately west of the proposed La Salle Lot redevelopment. He refers to his property as Ground Zero. It is often spoken about how the activity, sights and sounds of new neighbors would adversely affect him. I've listened carefully to his comments and made it my personal mission to ensure that the redevelopment won't hurt him. As a Planning Commissioner and member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, my primary concern with anything that comes before us is the impact on the neighbors. Managing change is never easy. None of us know with any degree of certainty what the future will bring. I try to step back, look at the big picture and imagine what things might look like 10, 20, 30 years down the road. Often, my visioning process includes making assumptions about the future of nearby properties. I pay special attention when a nearby property is rundown and try to imagine the potential catalytic impact of the proposal we are evaluating. Ground Zero is one of those nearby rundown properties. To describe Ground Zero as needing a little TLC, that would be an understatement. The property is, as seen through my eyes, an eyesore, but it's a man's home and I was wrong to make it part of my La Salle Lot comments. I hope that Mr. Wheeler will accept my apology. My tenure on the Planning Commission has lately been frustrating. I used to look forward to citizen comments, but for the past year or so, citizen comments have often been abrasive, loaded with misinformation, used faulty logic and presented opinions as fact. I'm deeply offended by the unending negative commentary on the competence and personal integrity of the professionals and volunteers involved in our city. Good people trying to do a good job don't deserve the abuse. I've let the trash talk get to me. It's harder and harder to sift through the misinformation, faulty logic, personal attacks and lack of sound analytical thinking to find the little nuggets that actually are useful. Oh, speaking of little nuggets, one of the speakers at the December 12 meeting raised the issue of pet waste disposal at the proposed La Salle Lot development. The comment was delivered along with the speaker's usual trash talking insults, but she did raise an issue that hadn't been considered. In my rising anger at the speaker's attitude and tone, I almost missed it. If we're going to have a pet-friendly building, we might want to make it easy for people to be good neighbors. That's the kind of input we need, but the negativity gets old. I'm tired of hearing that property developers and builders are greedy, evil people out to destroy Berkeley. That's just not true and I can only hope that the hostility directed at the builders and developers doesn't get transferred to the buyers of those new homes. Over the next 30 years, there could be a lot of new construction in Berkeley, or not. Our houses are aging and if Berkeley continues to be an attractive place to live and raise a family, many of the homes in Berkeley will be replaced or undergo major renovation. Older people will move on. My next stop is just north of 12 Mile. Hopefully, young people will move in, but if you make it difficult for those potential new residents to find the house they want, they will shop elsewhere and Berkeley will decline, just like some other inner ring suburbs. Be careful, competition is real. Effective immediately, I resigned from the Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals. It's been a pleasure to serve the city for the past 15 years. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Matt, whoever Darchelle is hiding, Annette, and the rest of city staff, thank you for your contributions. We are truly blessed to have you. To the newest member of City Council, congratulations on your appointment. Please be patient. Remember that most people are good and that they mean well. In the end, decency always wins. Merry Christmas, happy holidays and best wishes for a happy and new prosperous, or happy prosperous new year. Thank you. Mr. Staran, I'm going to sign this and hand it to the city clerk. If anybody tries to tell you I haven't resigned, they're not being honest with you.
Patty Curtis, resident of Berkeley. I am the person to which Mr. Smith just referred regarding the comments about pet waste that I brought up that no one else had considered prior to me bringing it up, or at least didn't bring it up forward publicly. I'm glad he resigned and the only reason I stepped up here is I want to encourage all of you and all of you to watch the recording of last week's December 12 Planning Commission meeting and you tell me where was I trash talking? Where was I negative? I was bringing up valid concerns and I'm disgusted that he would choose this moment when he had an opportunity to deliver a sincere apology and chose to use it again to trash people who had the courage to come forward and bring up valid concerns. I hope you accept his resignation and I hope you never, ever appoint him in any official capacity to any other position within the city or anyone like him. Thank you.
Kurt Height, 3525 Robina. You know, I just want to point out, you know, he leveled a lot of things that I didn't expect. I expect sometimes when people get up and they want to say an apology that they don't fill the first third of their speech making the same exact insults and even going further and trying to drag everybody else to the mud. You know, it says the city officers shall strive to refrain from abusive conduct, personal charges or verbal attacks upon the character or motives of other members of the council, boards or commissions and staff or public. Okay? He wants, he can say whatever he wants about people getting up here and lying, but you know, back last February, when they finally did the, when they finalized the master plan amendment repeal, two people that were very instrumental in getting that through got up and then rather than rehash, and actually you can go back and look at tapes, we hadn't rehashed any of it for the previous three or four months, but rather than rehash everything that we'd gone through, whether it was personal attacks from him or from Barnett or whoever, Dottie, we said, "Thank you." Kept a very sweet, "Thank you very much for getting us to this point." Not that they had anything to do with it, but we said, "Thank you." He took his turn at citizen's comments to once again insult the people that were involved in it, insult their motives, say they were lying, being in factual. I asked them then, you know, "I'd be willing for you to sit down and, you know, show me where what I said, the things that I did was unfactual or that my motives were not good." He's never, once went out of his way to do that because he wants to sit here and just spit lies, you know? So I do not appreciate that after all that it took for me to sit back and say, "You know what? I'm going to get up there and say, 'Thank you and I've offered the olive branch.'" I went up there one evening after the Planning Commission a few months ago and I tried to have a civil conversation with him and he leveled all those same lies at me, sitting right up there. And that's the kind of person he is. The sad thing is, is last year before he was reinstated to the Planning Commission, I went on a limb and told people, "You know what? It's too bad Dean wasn't on this Planning Commission anymore because he was a great guy. I loved talking to him. I had so much respect for him and I have never been so wrong about somebody." Thank you.
All right, hold on, hold on. I'm not, I am not going to let this get out of hand with personal attacks coming in any direction, okay? I know you've all have heard the two wrongs don't make a right thing. There were obviously some wrong things that were said. Mr. Smith has resigned from the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals. I am not going to sit here and allow people to just start hurling insults back and forth. I just want to make that clear on all sides. Thank you.
Hi. Wendy Zabramski on Gardner Avenue in Berkeley. I sent the council members a letter, email about a week ago and I brought up some, to me, outside looking in, some very serious things that are going on inside the city. I got two comments back. No, three. Three comments back and one initiated a phone call. I was wondering if any of those things had been handled, looked into. One thing I'm still very upset about was the fact that Matt took it upon himself and the ex-mayor and hired a person for his administrative assistant, which the resume slash application got into his hands the same day that his administrative assistant resigned. I don't know if that's legal or illegal. Point is, it's very unethical. How do you feel, Dan, with having the old mayor secretary in Matt's office so you can really see what's going on? Boy, what an insult that would be to me. That would be like throwing you under a damn truck. Anyway, so I understand an email went to staff and he apologized, made up several different reasons why it happened and from, oh, there were so many word of mouth applications to, oh, I looked up all the applications, to finally he posted it internally. My question is, why hasn't it been posted externally? Why doesn't any citizen of Berkeley or anyone that gets on the city site not able to see that there's a position open? Why would that, why would that be hush-hushed? Why would the mayor's secretary that's job's been eliminated be offered a position without it being posted? And it would have, it would have gone through if the employees hadn't spoke up. It would have gone through. She had in fact had her physical. She was ready to start. It was announced by Matt for her to start. I believe it was, the meeting was on the 5th where he announced it. I'm not sure of the date. Anyway, that's, all we've heard is that we want transparency in the city. We've fought for that for a couple of years now and then we hear of underhanded things like that. I also heard that a couple of people filed hostile work environment against somebody in the city and I was wondering if any of you have now become aware of it and if anything's being done or if it's just in a file cabinet. Thank you.
Those are serious allegations and we will certainly look into everything that you've just said. Dan?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Dan Mihajewski. I'm the chairman of the Berkeley Beautification Advisory Committee and so this is now time for our holiday spirit award presentation. And so let's dim the lights and see some beautiful homes. This year, we actually have nominated and awarded 10 homes for the award, so let's go ahead and start. So the first home here is 3572 Tyler and we just love that the home had a lot of different colors and as a homeowner, a father and a husband, it's hard enough to figure out what I'm going to just eat for the next day, you know, to be able to do what some of these homeowners are doing with their homes. So we really appreciate it, but this was one of the winners. The next one here is 3665 Buckingham and they do a great job trimming the roof and putting up a wreath that's lit and all that. It's amazing that they can get that done. The third home was 3764 Buckingham. We again liked the garland and the Santa Claus and the beautiful job they did with the bows along the line of the porch. This home here on Bacon, 3566 Bacon, did a great job as well. You see the wreaths, the lining of the roof line and again, we appreciate that in these dark months that they're able to do this. Cummings here did a great job with a lot of adornments in their front lawn and you can see the, my son and I watched the Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer there, so we got to see the big monster that they have and they did a really nice job. Oakshire here, 2375 Oakshire, they have a beautiful job with the garland and the wreath and the beautiful colors. 2814 Mortenson, that was a beautiful home. They have the beautiful snowflakes that actually change on the home and the globes that are dangling along with some ornaments on the yard. The next home here was on Franklin Road, 1851 Franklin and again, you see a lot of detail that they take the time to put together. This home here on Rosemont, again, it takes a difficult, a lot of work to get up there to the second level and put those lights and make sure those things are all working, so we really appreciate that home. And last and finally, Edgewood here, 2154 Edgewood with some beautiful lights and Santa Claus sitting there on the porch. So if any of the residents of these homes are here today to accept their award, please step forward. I'll hand you your certificate and then feel free to shake the hand of each of the City Council members and the mayor.
Got a bunch of people coming, good.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and shake everybody's hand?
This is awesome.
We don't like.
Hey, thanks for everything you do. Appreciate it.
Great.
Thank you. Congratulations. That's awesome.
Awesome. Congrats.
Join us up here.
You want to see?
It's pretty soon.
Thank you. You look beautiful.
Nice job. Good work.
Thank you, the city.
Yeah, thank you for what you do.
Awesome.
Good job.
Thank you.
Good work.
Thank you for beautifying the city.
It really looks nice.
Very eloquent.
You're welcome.
Uncle Gary.
Great job.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
See you Sunday.
Well done. Very well done.
Hey, good work.
You got it already?
The news travels fast.
Those are awesome. I certainly want to thank and congratulate everybody who won those awards. We're really, we are only a week away right now, so hopefully this will get us more, a little more festive in the holiday spirit. I do want to take note for the committee that chooses these that they have now chosen two of my aunts and uncles. Yet, I can't get a sniff, so I mean, I guess that's my, I got to step up my game. I know I'll hear about it at Christmas. Is there any other comments before we move along with the agenda? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. Ms. Boucher, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 37th City Council meeting on Monday, December 4th, 2017, and warrant, matter of approving warrant number 1321.
Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Support.
Moved by Mayor Pro Tem Baker, supported by Councilmember Blanchard. Any corrections, additions? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Henin.
Yes.
Kadakel.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes. And tonight's consent agenda has passed. Now move on, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognitions, presentations, matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing no other items, let's move on to number two.
Motion number M-8517, matter of authorizing the purchase and installation of a 125 KW emergency standby generator at the Public Safety Building in the amount of $84,430 from Professional Thermal Systems Incorporated, funds to be expended from account 101310982 Equipment.
Is there a motion to approve M-8517?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Councilmember Blanchard, with support by Councilmember Kadakel. Mr. Baumgartner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We continue to try to work to right-size a generator for the Public Safety Building. We've been through a long process of making sure that that generator, when called upon, powers all essential functions inside the building. New Public Safety Director Matt Kane and Jim Sahaski are now taking, are now project leads on this particular item and so they've submitted some items for you in your packet but are also here to outline the project a little bit and how it's changed since the last time we came before council.
As you know, back on October 2nd, a generator expenditure was approved for this project. After that, we did some further testing to verify that everything that was on the generator, that we had everything necessary on the generator and found out that we had some shortcomings. So we worked with the vendor to get everything essential that we needed on the generator, which included, most of our computers were not on the current generator. The one we had budgeted for would not, would not allow us to do that. So basically, what we have now in this proposal is this generator will power the entire building other than the air conditioning unit, the main air conditioning unit. There's an air conditioning unit in dispatch and air conditioning unit in the IT room on the second floor that will still be powered on this generator and basically the rest of the building. Some of the problems we ran into, there were no lights in the bathrooms, there were no lights in the lobby that are very essential, especially if we have a long-term outage.
It just, it also gives us the ability for future growth with department and new technology coming in, so I mean, it's a win-win for everybody.
Thanks, guys. Discussion, questions?
Thank you, Your Honor. When initial generators put in place, it was designed as mission-critical equipment and what I want to do is I want to ask the chief a question because I know he's been through this. When you were in Farmington Hills, you had a power outage on a building that was designed like this one with mission-critical stuff only. Do you explain why you wanted to move forward and add more things onto that generator?
During the blackout of 2001.
Three. Yep, three.
I was a patrol sergeant. We went on our generator, the generator, kind of like this building, did not power. For instance, we cater our prisoner food there. We had a few more prisoners. The refrigerator freezer was not on the generator. We lost all that food. Our bathrooms didn't function because it needed power for the toilets to flush. Most of our building did not function. So what Farmington Hills did, and it's a campus like this one, except it had Station 5, which is the headquarters station, the court, City Hall and the police department and at a huge expense, I'm sure, purchased a new generator that powered everything in all four buildings so that if we lost power, and we have several times, every single outlet and light in all four buildings functioned. You know, right now, our report-writing computer, where the officers write reports, there is no power in that on the generator other than one emergency light, so we can't write reports. So this really, we kind of learned this hardware. We just couldn't function. We ended up having to power a command post which has a generator in front of the station. We operated out of our command post, which is not an option we have here. You know, this generator was installed when the building was built almost 30 years ago and my feeling is if we do it right this time, hopefully we have another generator to last 30 years and really take us into the future.
So everything that we've got on now is the new mission critical.
Yes.
Because we have a lot more electronics than we used to have, so we can justify the additional cost because these are things that have to be run in order to make our officers function efficiently.
Exactly. You know, we're highly dependent on IT now. All of our programs are web-based and you need to get on computers to access local county systems.
Also want to make sure that this is a Level 1 Type 10 generator and for those people in the audience that don't know, this is a emergency services generator for life safety. The Level 10 means it has to be online in nine seconds and providing full regulated power in nine seconds, which is the standard for hospitals and public safety answering points, which our police station is. So that's one of the reasons we have to get this generator in and get it up and get it running. That's all I have right now. I might think of something else, but...
Okay, take your time. Councilmember Henin.
Yeah. Do we have a maintenance budgeted for this?
Yes, we do.
All right. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem Baker.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for bringing this to us again here and for doing what we can do to ensure that we're able to provide these essential services for officers on behalf of our community. What's the fuel source for this? Is it natural gas? Is it gasoline? Can you talk a little bit about in those hopefully unlikely events where this equipment may be needed, how would it fire up and what does it draw from?
I can tell you it's natural gas. I've learned a lot, quite a lot in this process. I need help changing the light bulbs. Chris and you are not friends, so Dean's been a great help.
Good.
And gas, I mean typically we never have a problem with gas. We just got to make sure everything's sized properly.
Right.
Councilman Blanchard, we had talked with about the sizing for the gas and the intake on everything, so.
Good, good. Excellent. And if you could just briefly describe from a process perspective, without getting into all the details, the way in which this would be installed so that we minimize any disruptions to the existing operations and how to do the cut over and the testing? Could you talk a little bit about the approach that we'll take?
Well, that's, as a matter of fact, our contractors here right now, but it's going to be, we won't be without a generator. I might take that back. I believe we were going to be down for about eight hours. Is that correct? Without a generator and during that time, we'll be on standby with Oak Park in case any emergencies were to arise. We can do a switch over for our dispatch and, you know, we'll house any prisoners that we have, you know, with Oak Park, so it's not going to be disruptive to us. And again, that's only if there's a power outage during the switch over.
Cool. Yes, I might suggest that you consult your old farmer's almanac to just check the weather that day and make sure that, you know, in the utility space, they call it a blue sky day to ensure that, you know, you minimize those kind of things as opposed to trying to do it in a thunderstorm or something like that. Thank you.
Councilmember Kadakel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The timeline when this generator will arrive and when it will be put in, according to farmer's almanac.
Ted, if you wouldn't mind, the timeline from when we ordered the generator till we take delivery?
Could you please come up to the microphone so everybody at home can hear you too? Thank you.
If you guys approve this generator, then we'll get a submittal from the supplier and so that takes a couple of weeks and then I believe this just...
Thank you.
If you guys approve this generator, then we'll get a submittal from the supplier, and so that takes a couple of weeks. And then I believe this generator is 12 weeks out probably for manufacturing.
Approximately 12 weeks for manufacturing.
So you're probably looking at 14 weeks would be the earliest that we could install it.
Okay.
But we can get pre-stuff done and in place in the meantime. We've got to get the gas going.
Correct.
And we've got a bunch of prep work to do, so all that stuff can get underway. So once the generator's put in place, we get that window, like you said, weather-wise window in there. We can get these guys in and get it going ASAP.
Nice.
Right. So we're talking when the generator gets here, like Jim said, there's prep work that has to be done. We're waiting for that 12 weeks to pass, so that when the generator gets here, we're a day away from hooking it up.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You guys got to take turns again.
Would you cover the warranty on this massive piece of equipment?
The warranty is supported by the manufacturer. There's a local... The local manufacturer's rep is in Wixom. In fact, they currently service your existing generator, so they're familiar with the site, and they would provide the warranty service for the generator.
Do you know if this is a... What engine this generator has?
It's a Ford engine.
Ford V-10?
V8, I believe.
V8.
I sent a cut to you, Jim.
Yeah, we just got it about 20 minutes.
Okay. I'll take a look at it. Yeah. Thank you.
I should have had a V8. No, sorry. Is there any scrap value to the existing generator? Is there any opportunity to harvest some of that, or does it just go to the scrapper people?
Yeah, not really, because by the time you get the equipment in place to pick it up and remove it, there's really not any value left in it.
Henry Ford might want it for the museum.
And then, kind of as a follow-up to the maintenance, is there, like, scheduled tests that go on with these every periodic basis or annually, just to make sure it's going to work?
It'll start and run once a week.
Once a week? Nice.
So it's important that you listen for that to run weekly.
What we're going to do is we're going to set a time for it to go off, and the chief had already said what we'll do is put in place, so that if we know it's going to go off at 12 o'clock on Mondays, whatever shifts on duty that day, we'll make notation, sign, the generator did come on, did run its specific amount of time, and then that way, we can keep a log of it also. And then they also do with our service agreement, we have load tests done once a year on it, so when they do their standard maintenance on it also. Except then, everything's got to be logged, and the chief was pretty hard about that.
Important to have good records. Thank you.
That includes a initial setup, startup, run check, right?
Yes, sir.
That's in the contract.
And training.
And training.
For all personnel, so...
Training for anybody who wants to attend. Want to know how it works and what...
Perfect.
And Blanchard's going to be there for that, so...
Any other comments, questions?
Just comment. Thank you for your hard work, gentlemen. Appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Got a question in the audience?
Yeah. Can I just stand here?
No. Can you come up to the microphone, please?
Just for you guys. Sure. Chuck Romler, Berkeley resident, Thomason Cambridge. Question about the generator, the current one. What is the capacity? Yeah, the capacity of the generator. Can you answer that, the current one?
The existing is a 45 KW.
Okay, so yeah, definitely twice the size. And is... What percentage of its surface life has it been utilized for? How many years old is it?
Thirty plus years.
Okay, so it's at its end of its use life. I had no idea. Just wanted to baseline and ask that question if there wasn't any residual value in it that we couldn't use to offset the 84K that we're... Or the one, whatever we're spending on.
One of the things that we had with it is we can't even get parts for it anymore. You know, I mean, it's sold.
Yeah, fair enough. I always like to get my money's worth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Polk. And for about 13 months, my heart was being... Was functioned, or a battery-powered device was actually performing the functions of my heart. I had about 40 to 48 hours' worth of battery life. I'm sure there's other people who have medical devices that are battery-operated, rechargeable, that keep them alive in one way or another. If we had an outage, would citizens... Would Berkeley citizens be able to bring their device or their batteries to the police headquarters so that they would be able to charge them?
I don't know why not. I mean, I actually think that's a great point that you brought up.
Yeah, in the past.
And it should maybe be something that we put out in the media, because that's what we're here for. We're here to help in the upgrade in the generator, allow us the ability to take care of it, so yes.
Thanks, Gary. We have in the past, and certainly more...
Yes, you did.
Hopefully more capacity will allow us to be able to do that.
We used to have a record of everybody that had rechargeable medical devices, and they were contacted as soon as the power went out, and arrangements were made to get those recharged as necessary. So I don't see why we wouldn't continue that with more power. That only makes sense.
And it's great, Mr. Mayor, that you have that.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-8517?
Kadekko?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Hennan?
Yes.
Terbrandt?
Yes. M-8517 has passed.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ladies. Have a good day.
Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number three on tonight's agenda?
Resolution number R-4617, matter of approving a 123 net Metro Act permit application for a unilateral permit under the Metro Act.
Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Councilmember Kadekko?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Hennan. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our legal team, as well as our public works and our clerk's office, have been working on making sure that this thing is processed accordingly. I do have a note, our public works director was not able to attend, but he did want to make sure that council knows, as well as the people out there, that what this application does lack in that detailed engineering review, that would be the next step in this process if it were to move forward after this evening. The applicant will need to submit engineering drawings for DPW for right-of-way review and approval before any construction were to start if it proceeds past this point. So that was a notation that Derek asked me to pass along. Other than that, I will refer to the city's attorney for more information on our Metro Act permit.
Is the applicant here? Yes? Okay.
Yes, just very briefly, and perhaps the applicant is better suited to explain exactly what's being proposed, but just in the way of background, the Metro Act has been in place for a number of years now, is intended to set forth a procedure, a process, and a standardized agreement throughout the state of Michigan to create an efficient review and approval process to allow these telecommunications installations to take place throughout, not only our city, but again, throughout the state. It also provides... Each provider pays fees into the state. I don't know if it's called the Metro Fund, but that's what I'm going to call it. They pay based on their lineal footage, and those fees are actually then redistributed to the communities once a year. I think it's in May that the city receives its allocation. With respect to this particular permit, they are requesting the unilateral form Metro Act permit. The primary significance of that is it will have a five-year term. There are some renewal provisions, but it will have an initial five-year term. As I understand this proposal, and again, the applicant's representative can explain it further, this is strictly for underlying, underground, rather, fiber optics. The routing, I believe, will be along 11 Mile, and then from 11 Mile... Or on Coolidge, from 11 Mile to 12 Mile, and then east from Coolidge along 12 Mile, right on through and past Woodward Avenue. No above-ground facilities are being proposed, no poles are being proposed, no small-cell wireless facilities are being proposed, so that's why a Metro Act permit is appropriate for this. One other comment I will make, just piggybacking on what the city manager said, this is the process... The Metro Act permit is the process to have the city council basically approve that they'll have the right to come into the city. There still is another step, an administrative step, and that's after they get their Metro permit, they will, when they're ready to build, they will need to submit the detailed routing and engineering specifications. They will need to provide up-to-date insurance certificates. That has to be in place. It's spelled out right in their permit before they commence construction. They need to provide that information. So there will be that additional step. They're not going to be out there laying fiber optic cable tomorrow, but this will, again, clear the way for them to go that next step.
Why don't you tell us what you want to do?
I think he just basically said it exactly. We're looking to lay underground fiber optic cable through the city.
Okay.
Doing a large project right now. Two points. One, obviously, we have a large project that we're working on, but secondly, it gives us a chance to sell to customers, which would be businesses inside your municipality.
Okay. No cables coming up, though?
No, nothing underground yet, but we will have hand poles in places where we can access to expand when we want to, which would also be right-of-way permits and amending to the Metro Act. The Metro Act is basically something we have to do with every municipality. Being a telecom company, we have to.
Yes.
We're familiar.
Councilmember Blanchard?
Would you explain how you're going to do this? How you're going to go from 11 Mile, down 11 Mile to Coolidge, up Coolidge to 12, down 12 to Woodward, down Woodward to Edgewood, and then go over to Royal Oak? How are you going to put that in and not disrupt the city?
That's a good question. I mean, we're obviously going to do some... There's going to be places where we're going to have to have equipment in the right-of-way. We do our best to stay out of the roads themselves, but there are occasions where we've got to have signage put up and traffic control. It's a little bit out of our realm as far as specifics, but we do underground boring, so we'll have the drills out.
Is it going to be under the road or under the sidewalk?
It's going to be in the right-of-way, between the sidewalk and the road usually.
I think he just explained you're going to do the underground directional boring as opposed to the open cut?
Correct.
All right. And that'll certainly minimize the disturbance to the right-of-way into the roads.
And finding a clear path in our designs before we submit our right-of-way permits with our...
Because one of the things in this said possibly open trench, and that's a little scary.
No, we have no interest in doing that, but it's one of those put it in the Metro Act kind of situations.
Are the councilmembers have questions? Councilmember Kadekko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. How long will this disturbance last to the residents?
Hopefully about three weeks with restoration for the full route, because it's about three miles long. So it'll be in sections.
For the entire program?
I'm sorry?
For the entire...
It's our hope. Yeah, we move pretty quick. We've gotten a lot better in the last few years. We started very small.
Yes.
Sure, after...
Councilmember Hennan?
So is this the... Will there be follow-on projects after this?
I hope so. I can lie and say no, huh? That's more business to do.
And what form might those take? You know, and I'm thinking along needing additional permits?
Oh, yeah.
Additional right-of-way disruptions? Are we going to start seeing equipment above ground?
No. Everything that we do is that is underground for the most part. Anything would be permitted, obviously, but that's strictly what we try to do. Does that answer that?
Okay. Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, I was just curious. You've covered some of it in terms of it being in the right-of-way, so it'd be the grass and then the boring process, so it wouldn't do that. When we get into the Coolidge, cutting up our downtown in particular, there's not a lot of green space to work with there. So you could describe a little bit from your experience how you've handled these kind of situations in the past, as far as, you know, that we have road, we have sidewalk, and we have businesses. And so what's your strategy for...
In a situation like that, we'll probably have to remove legs of concrete and replace. Generally speaking, we're pretty quick with doing that when we have to. Once again, I apologize, I'm not the construction worker here, so I don't know everything, but I do know that we're very big on getting our restoration work done.
So would it be like every block of sidewalk along the way?
No, 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 wherever. We have to come up. There's a process. You can go between 400 feet and 1,000 feet, depending on the drill, but at some point, you have to have about a 4x4 chunk that goes down about four feet, so you can have the inter ducts connect to each other, or the conduit.
Continuing on that for just a moment, what kind of notification programs have you done in the past to, you know, give the business owners? Let's say if I'm the lucky business within that 400 to 1,000 feet where you get to dig up my sidewalk and ask for this fantastic cure for a while? Have you guys...
Actually, we haven't had a lot of where we had to do that, but we're happy to coordinate whatever you'd like. If you'd like us to contact the businesses before we work, absolutely. We'll go down door to door if that's what you want us to do.
Certainly, we appreciate your flexibility with communication. That's key for us, both for our residents and then the businesses that seek to cater to those residents. We have a strong DDA presence here that might be able to better understand the impacts of what you're proposing and help mitigate some of the downtime with our businesses.
We also generally try to be at intersections. We don't try to be in the middle of a block, so...
Sure.
Most of what we do is underground.
Nice. Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. You will work with Ms. Dig for all the utilities? Now, I think you're required to hand-dig at all of those utilities, so that could be hand-digging, taking legs of concrete out in front of every business?
It's definitely possible.
Because they have utility lines running into each one of the businesses, so we may have significant disruption on sidewalks. When would you propose this thing, this project, start? When you could kick off the three-week work?
I would imagine it's currently beginning a month, two months, depending on what your engineering department will allow. I believe they have the drawings already. I'm not 100% on that. If they're not, they're coming very soon.
So January, end of January, early February, maybe?
Probably.
Thank you.
Thank you. As part of that process, will you be renewing your permits and things like that? The application that was provided to us, anyway, had a handful of different types of insurance and policy numbers, and they all seemed to have expired upwards of a year ago and/or coming on a year ago. I wasn't sure if you had a process to bring that to us as part of the engineering process, again?
Well, the biggest thing is we tried to fill out... Well, the biggest thing is we tried to fill out, or we tried to do a Metro Act about a year ago, and it kind of stalled in the initial meetings because we didn't need to do what was required for that. My end, I forgot. Your office, I'm assuming, forgot too, and we just kind of let it float, and I didn't worry about it. So I started a new permit with this. I use the same COI because I had that already. But yes, we ought to renew.
Yeah, good. For the whole suite of these, of the variety of permits and things.
That will be required--
With the entire Metro Act, that's--
That will be required before they would obtain construction approval.
Question from citizen?
Hi, Rachel Pisantini. I just have a quick question. You said you're going to, the spot you're going to be working is between the sidewalk and the street?
Mostly, yes.
So most of the area that you described is businesses except for 11 mile. You have quite a few residential homes, and I want to make sure that whatever work you do, you're going to put the grass back to where it was. Is that clear? I mean, is that correct?
Is that one of these people?
No, but I want to make sure that--
That will definitely be a requirement.
Yes. No, I'm not on that. That's okay. I just want to make sure that that question wasn't asked, and I want to make sure that we're clear that it will be--
Restoration of the right-of-way will definitely be required.
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
Thank you for clarifying that and also the offer to certainly notify all the businesses and everybody else in the area. Mr. Turney?
Mayor, may I ask one?
I got a question for you, but you can ask questions. What happens if we vote no on this?
If you vote no on this, we, if they have provided a complete application and we want to vote no, we will need to have a very good reason for that or else the applicant will be able to go to the Michigan Public Service Commission to have that overturned.
That's what I thought. Thank you. What's your question?
My question, and I'm not sure if this gentleman will be able to answer it because I know you're not, you're not one of the construction guys or the engineering guys, but when you install the, with the directional boring and when you install the fiber optic, will you be enclosing that in a conduit? Will there be a conduit?
Under the ground, yes.
Will that be available for other potential users who may be, may be coming to Berkeley down the-- I'm just wondering, do you size it just for your cable?
It's basically for us, yes.
Okay.
If you guys were looking for something for you, I'm sure we could work something to tie in at the same time, but--
I'm just throwing that out. Sometimes when you have these come in and if they're putting in a conduit, it makes sense sometimes to have them put something in that's oversized, and that way any future utilities, telecommunications providers or whatever would already have that in place and would help minimize any future disruption. But that's something that can be looked at, and I'm sure when the engineering plans are submitted and Mr. Schuler is taking a close look at that, that your people can talk to our people and we'll figure that stuff out.
It's not something I can say one way or the other. What you're saying makes sense, though.
It's an inch-and-a-quarter conduit, which is in the program here now.
Please come up.
Just a comment about the reserve capacity you might want, you're thinking about putting into a conduit system. You have to balance the cost versus risk, which is your nominal cost for putting your, what'd you say, inch-and-a-quarter conduit, which is the sleeve for your fiber optic cable. And the risk is that at some future date, you want to use the reserve capacity. Let's say you're going to pay a delta increase for a two-inch or a three-inch conduit just to have extra space to put something in the future. Somebody else comes in there and gums up what has just been done, there's a huge liability issue with what the work they've done. It's probably best to just do it on a case-by-case basis, even if the cost isn't as efficient as what you've envisioned.
Thank you, Chuck. Any other questions or comments, council? Seeing none, Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Henon?
Yes.
Kadeko?
Yes.
Turbrak?
No.
M-85, R-4617 has been approved. Ms. Boucher, would you please read item number four on tonight's agenda?
Motion number M-8417, matter of an appointment to fill the current vacancy on city council.
Is there a motion to approve M-8417?
Move to approve.
Support.
Moved to approve by Councilmember Kadeko with support from Mayor Protem Baker. I guess this is me now. At the last council meeting, we outlined a process to fill the vacant city council seat. Involved an ad hoc committee composed of Mayor Protem Baker, Councilmember Stedman, and Councilmember Henon. Committee was tasked with reviewing the 20 applications and giving feedback based on the criteria that the committee discussed and approved at the beginning of that meeting. Criteria consisted of community engagement, municipal involvement, professional experience, background, and diversity. Now, that's the first part. Because we have not had a situation like this, at least that I recall or that we've had in some time, and I don't want to run into a situation like this again, I'm asking that council considers amending our rules to include the process to fill a vacant city council seat at an upcoming meeting. At that time, we will discuss the process that was used this time, if there are any changes that need to be made. But ultimately, future councils will have an agreed-upon protocol in place to fill vacancies should they arise again so that we don't find ourselves in a situation where we kind of have to just figure it out on our own. That will be approved annually as this council and subsequent councils approve their rules, and if changes are made, they will be made at that time. I wanted to get that out of the way as well because I think that's important for us moving forward. The subcommittee was tasked with making some recommendations to the city council. The subcommittee recommended six highly qualified applicants, and they were invited to speak at the last city council meeting. Those applicants are Sue Sitraro, Bridget Dean, Ross Gavin, Lisa Kempner, Carla Osborne, and Natalie Price. Council now has the unenviable task of choosing who the newest member of city council will be. The inherent problem is the fact that we have one vacancy, and no matter what the outcome is, five of the six engaged residents are going to be disappointed, maybe relieved. Friends and supporters potentially also will be disappointed, and we understand that. But it is our job as elected officials, who have all been elected by the residents, to make this decision. I have no doubt that in two years, a number of the folks will have, will make tremendous candidates for city council, whether appointed or not. But the reality is, only one can be appointed. So how are we going to handle this? In the past, a couple of different approaches have been used to appoint council members. The first method, somebody is nominated by a council member. A council member then has to second that appointment, and then a roll call vote ensues. It is relatively quick, but if a candidate does not receive a majority, that person is automatically then eliminated. The method also means that a candidate could fail for a lack of a second if no other council member seconds that nomination, or again, the four votes are not received and people continue to be eliminated that, in that manner, until somebody gets four votes. This potentially creates a number of uncomfortable situations, and uncomfortable is not necessarily the most important thing here, but it often puts folks in a position where they're either withholding certain comments or they're having to speak against somebody named in the motion when they don't really want to speak against the person named. They just have a different preference. So second method that I am enacting, doing, using this evening, will allow each council member to nominate an applicant. If your preferred applicant has already been nominated, there is no reason to nominate that person again. So each person will have the opportunity to nominate one name in the first pass through. If only one applicant is nominated, a motion will be made to appoint that applicant to city council. But if two or more applicants are nominated, we will have some discussion, and then I will ask for a roll call vote. Each council member will cast a vote for his or her preferred nominee. The nominees, or in the case of more than three nominees, the top two will remain and the bottom two receive the fewest number of votes, and that roll call will then essentially be eliminated. The process will continue until some applicant, until an applicant is able to receive a majority, which is four votes. In the event that the process ends three to three, because there are six of us on a second or third pass, there will have to either be continued discussion, dialogue. Councilmembers will have to state their case. Somebody's going to probably have some sort of epiphany, change their mind, or a candidate, somebody else can be potentially nominated as a consensus candidate. At any rate, we are looking for four votes. There are six folks up here right now. We are in need of a seventh, and this is the method that we're going to use, and it's going to allow us to have a little bit more discussion and deliberation as opposed to simply somebody just saying, "I nominate X." Boom, 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 up or down. It just seems like there's not a lot of thought going into it. We'll also tell you that council members have met with the candidates. I don't know if everybody has met with all of the candidates, but I know that most have met with many of the candidates. They have taken considerable time and care and effort into making this decision. It is not a decision that anybody up here is making lightly, knowing that regardless of whatever decision we make, doesn't matter who the appointee is, there will be people who complain and say this was done in the wrong way, or this person should have been it, or this person should have been it. We cannot concern ourselves with that, unfortunately. We are up here to perform a task, and that task is in front of us, and that is what we are going to do. Are there any questions from council, comments, before we begin the process? So again, once I ask Ms. Boucher to call the roll the first time, you will nominate your preferred applicant, candidate. If that person has already been mentioned, you do not need to nominate them again. You do not need to nominate anybody else. You can simply essentially say that your nominee has already been mentioned, and we'll go from there. After that, we'll have a brief discussion, and then I will call for the first roll call vote. Good? Yep? Okay. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll and ask for nominees?
Baker?
Yes, thank you. I would like to put in a nomination for consideration, Ms. Natalie Price.
I'd like to nominate Ross Gavin.
Sue Sitraro.
Kadeko?
My candidate has been mentioned.
Turbrak?
Do we have Eileen? Did I miss you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
Stedman?
My candidate's been mentioned.
Okay.
And Turbrak?
Bridget Dean. Okay, we have four applicants. So the process, again, we will have discussion. Councilmembers will, if they choose to have discussion, we'll see how long that goes, and at some point, I will call for a roll call vote. When I call for the first roll call vote, you will vote for your preferred candidate. The folks that, you know, if we have, the bottom two each have, say, one vote or something, then those two would be moved off, and we would move ahead with candidates who receive the most votes, the two candidates receiving the most votes, because we have four. Discussion.
I'll open.
Councilmember Henon?
I know, I first want to disclose that Sue Sitraro did donate to my campaign, and we also serve on the Board of Berkeley Citizens United together. But that aside, what I was looking for was complementary skills and background, complementary to the skills we already have up here. Independent thoughts and willing to challenge, someone who's connected to the community and can reach out to them and, you know, know the will of the people. And then I heavily weighted people with knowledge of current issues. And after speaking to all of the candidates on those issues, Sue came out ahead for me on that. Her job, her daily job as a fiduciary, you know, requires her to own her decisions, to, you know, she can't pass the buck. She has to research things in depth and to know where, you know, to be sure that the decisions she's making are good decisions. She's a longtime resident. We know all the work she's put in with the juniors, with Berkeley Days, Holidays, Light Parade, and engaged on social media. And this is how I see her being involved with the community and, you know, hearing what people have to say and hearing what people are concerned about. And then with looking at the current issues that are facing the city, she had, of every issue I asked about, save one that nobody knew, including myself, she had at least a basic understanding, and for most everything, she had a deep understanding of the issues going on in the city. I know she has been following and watching a lot of things. She asks a lot of probing questions, and I feel that she would really be able to hit the ground running if we nominated her, appointed her to city council.
Thank you. Other discussion? Councilmember Blanchard?
I nominated Ross Gavin. He's got a great deal of experience working for the county, the county treasurer. He understands finance. He's been very active with the DDA. In fact, he's the treasurer of the DDA. Great knowledge of the city, very involved. We had a long discussion, and he was likewise able to answer the question I asked him. I feel very confident that he could set up here and do an excellent job in this position.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm also nominating--
You don't have to at this point.
Oh, not at this point?
No. You don't have to. You can speak if you want to, but you don't have to.
I'd be glad to share some of my thoughts. So I appreciate the thought process that's gone into our discussion tonight. It was great to talk with everybody. I learned so much, and I think we actually have a lot of talent here in this pool. I think we all agree that whoever we choose is going to serve the city well, and it's choosing the best of the best is kind of the way I look at this. And having said that, one of the things I like about Ms. Price is that fresh perspective that she would bring to the council here. She, as a teacher, understands how to learn things quickly. She understands how to explain things well, and certainly as educators know, how to hold people accountable. I think those are good characteristics and traits that she would bring to our group here. And I like that she would bring a fresh perspective to this as well. I mentioned that earlier. She is aware of things going on throughout the community. Her overall knowledge was indeed impressive, and the fact that she doesn't come in with a lot of preconceived perspectives was different enough for me to get me to think that this might be an interesting voice to add to ours, given the strength that we already have here on the council. Those are some of my thoughts.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Well, I nominated Bridget Dean, you know, for a number of reasons. Some of them were brought up by my colleagues in their remarks. Bridget and I don't know each other very well. I'm pretty open to say that. But in the times that I've gotten to see her as a member of the DDA, as a business owner in the city, and in our conversation, it's very clear to me that she is very, very well-informed on what is happening in the city, not just in the DDA district, but all around. She is certainly engaged. She's very passionate and enthusiastic, and I have every confidence that as a member of council, she would bring those traits as well and be able to hit the ground running. With no other comments at this time, we will take a roll call vote in which each council member will vote for their preferred applicant. Maybe not.
Can you put comments on this agenda item? I just have a quick question.
Certainly.
All right. Because Patty Curtis, again, Berkeley resident, because I like to challenge process. Two things. Number one, I noticed only one of the council membership revealed any possible conflict of interest. I'd like to hear from all of you as to whether or not you have any professional, club associations, anything that, any contributions or anything like that, as Mr. Henon did. Number two, this is my own personal observation for your consideration. Of the four people that were nominated here, I have only seen one of them regularly attending council meetings. One of them I saw for the last two council meetings, and the other two I saw only at the council meeting in the past year and a half, and I've attended almost all of them when their names came up for consideration. And I would like you to take all of that into consideration, too, because you do have candidates who have put in the time and the effort to engage with the council itself and understand the process. Okay? So if you could address those conflicts, any possible conflicts, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
I thank you, Ms. Curtis. I also expect the same respect to council members, who, again, we are not, this is not something that we're taking lightly. It's a very difficult decision. As I said at the beginning, people are not going to be happy no matter what way this ends up, and we certainly do take that all into consideration. Thank you. As far as your other question, while I took no campaign contributions in the last election, as I said, I have no connection to Bridget. I did have a treasurer listed, even though I didn't end up raising any funds, and that was Carla Osborne, who is also a candidate. That is a connection as well. Mayor Protem?
Sure, yep, thank you. I think that's good. The, Ms. Osborne also made a small contribution to my campaign and was active in the summer and fall with that, as was Mr. Gavin. No financial contributions, but he dedicated his time and energy.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
I can ask that question simply. I took no campaign contributions for anybody that applied for the office.
You did ask about club affiliations or--
I would have disclosed that.
Please.
You weren't answering--
I was wait, don't worry. I understand. We will get there. I don't want to have a yelling back-and-forth situation like we had at a different meeting recently. Club affiliations, who's in a club? Who has friends in a club? So I am pretty clear, I'm well aware of where Ms. Curtis is going with this. She is talking about the Berkeley Democratic Club, and that's fine. I was a member of the Berkeley Democratic Club. I am, I may not have paid my dues, but either way, I am still a member of that club. As far as I know, the candidates that are also, or the nominees that are also a member of that club, Ross Gavin. I don't know anybody, any of the other candidates, if they're officially members. Maybe they've attended meetings. I'm not sure what specifically we're going for, but--
Well, I don't know if I'm a, if my dues have been current either, but I, too, have participated with the Berkeley Dems in the past and-- and stay as connected as I can, but not more than that.
I've participated with the Berkeley Democratic Club. And I'm also sure my dues are definitely not current. So, and Carla helped me a lot with my campaign two years ago. And Ross helped a little bit, but he didn't, not financially.
Well, I mean, there's nothing wrong with people supporting you, regardless. I mean, it's, there's no, there's nothing wrong with somebody being supportive of your campaign. As Mr. Henin said, that's a great thing. That's how we get to know people and how we get elected. So I don't think that is a, anything that anybody should be shying away from, certainly disclosing. I welcome that conversation and discussion. Councilmember Blanchard?
I'm not loaded to Berkeley Democratic.
You are. That's correct.
I have been a member of the Berkeley Dems, but I definitely know my dues are not current.
Apparently, yeah, apparently the Dem club is in bad shape because nobody pays. At least the people up here. And I'm not trying to make light of that, but it's important. It's important to know, it's also important to know that, in my estimation at least, is not any sort of disqualifying factor for any of the candidates in any way. I think it's important that it is disclosed. And I think it's a good point that we get that all out in the open. I, again, regardless of what sometimes happens or doesn't happen, the whole point of this process is to try and be as absolutely transparent as possible, to have a discussion here, to talk about whatever is important, and to ultimately select the next member of the 37th Council of the City of Berkeley. So, with that, are we all properly disclosed and happy? Again, Ms. Boucher will call the roll. When she calls the roll, you are to vote for your preferred nominee. We have four. If there are four folks that get votes, the top two, unless, if there's a tie, the bottom two would fall off and then the top two would continue. Please call the roll.
Blanchard?
Ross Gavin.
Henin.
Sue Sotrow.
Kedekel.
Natalie Price.
Stedman.
Ross Gavin.
Baker.
Natalie Price.
And Turbrak.
Bridgette Dean. Were you able to tally that up?
Yes. You have two for Natalie and two for Ross.
Thank you. So, judging by what was said, we have now, we're essentially at two that have two, the two that had one. We'll not be continuing in this conversation right now. We have two applicants that received more votes at this point. Certainly open to discussion with the two remaining applicants, or we can simply call for a roll call vote and see what happens. Unless there is any other comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank all of the candidates. I met with each and every one of you for a long time. And you all bring something to the table that we need. But the reason I chose Ms. Price, beside what Mayor Protam Baker spoke about, is she brings a lot to this council that Councilmember Gravlin brought, with young kids, young mother, growing family. And being involved from a point of view where we're going to get that other perspective. We're going to bring more people into the fold from the people that Ms. Price works with. And I think that missing that on the council right now is a concern of mine. And I would like to see that fulfilled. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of council?
Oh, we...
You can discuss, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
I had selected Ross, even though I really went into this saying, oh, great, there's five women, you know. But one of the reasons that I selected him, or am selecting him, was because of the benefits that he brings with his very unique qualifications with the DDA, both locally, county-wise, and statewide, that I know through the years, it's been so important to be able to interact with all across the state to bring new ideas and so on to Berkeley.
Thank you. Other comments from council before we have a roll call vote?
I am going to put my vote behind Ross Gavin. I believe it is a hard choice. These are all skilled individuals. But I felt my conversation with Ross, that he had a better understanding of the issues facing the city. A lot of that had to do with his participation with the Citizen Advisory Committee, his work with the county. And I think of the two remaining choices, although it is close, I think he is the better choice.
Thank you, Councilmember Henin, for your thoughts. You were not obligated to give them, but thank you. We appreciate that. Councilmember?
Thank you, Your Honor. That's just fine. I will, I will again vote for Natalie for the next round. There was a comment that was made at the community event that we had after the flood at the high school. It was an emotional, touchy topic. And a lot of folks were really doing their best to try to understand what was going on and what we could do with this. And afterward, there was a couple that came up to me and talked about the process and the communication information that was conveyed. And it was a positive conversation, as best as could be had in such a setting. But the way they chose to end the conversation was, I think, was really eye-opening. It was a good comment. She said, you know, I'm not going to be voting for you in the fall. And I said, oh, well, that's your choice, certainly. I'm curious as to why. I said, well, we need more normal people on council. We need somebody that's not in all of this stuff. I'm like, what am I? No, we need the average people that are not deeply embedded and connected. And that got me thinking. They talk about, you know, strengths and weaknesses. And this is a case where somebody coming in with a fresh perspective, I think, would actually be seen as a strength, you know, given her ability to learn and apply and understand this stuff. Again, I second the, and third and fourth, fifth, the comments of the caliber of the talent that we've seen. I delight to, I was delighted to speak with them. Many of these folks I know personally and professionally through the city operations here and continue to be greatly impressed with what they offer and the skills that they bring to the table. And I'd just like to bring an additional voice to council that isn't involved in all this kind of stuff. That conversation at the community event resonated with me then. And upon reflection with this decision here, I'm choosing to look at it through those lens with how I'll be casting my vote for this next round.
Thank you. It's a very interesting story that you brought up, and normal people. Sometimes, I mean, yeah, we wear suits here and we dress up, but I like to think we're normal people. I mean, I don't know. You know, kids that bother me all the time, my wife that doesn't think I do things right a lot of times. I feel like that's about as normal as a kid. So, sometimes, and I only say that because sometimes up here, it looks like we're not normal. And we always have ulterior motives for things. And it's not that at all. It's just that we have been tasked with making decisions that impact the residents. And that is not something that we take lightly. And it's not an easy thing to do. It's very difficult to make a lot of the decisions that we have to make. So, whether we're looked at as normal or not, I like to think that we are still normal people despite that. With no further discussion, we will be taking a roll call vote. There are two nominees, Natalie Price and Ross Gavin. And you will be selecting one of those. And in the event that it is a three-to-three tie, we will continue the discussion. Ms. Boucher?
Henin.
Ross Gavin.
Kedekel.
Natalie Price.
Stedman.
Ross Gavin.
Baker.
Natalie Price.
Blanchard.
Ross Gavin.
And Turbrak.
Ross Gavin. Ross Gavin will be the seventh member of the 37th Council of the City of Berkeley. As the process stated before, he will be sworn in over the next couple of days and will take office officially in January at the next city council meeting. Again, not an easy situation, not something that any of us take lightly, regardless.
I would just quickly like to make a comment. Every one of you that said that Ross Gavin, or all of you mentioned that Ross Gavin is in the Democratic Club, and most of you are, it is really, you know, this has been going on, Democratic, Democratic, Democratic. This is a nonpartisan city, huh?
Correct.
But you guys, over and over, go Democrat.
Me?
Yeah, I mean, we're not going to, there's no reason to get into that. That is not, well, we'll just leave it at that. As I said, there was going to be unhappy residents, no matter what. Will now move on to the communications?
Yes. That would be Kedekel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I want to thank everyone that did apply, not just the six, but all 20. And I urge you to get involved, because this is a great city and there are a lot of great people in this city. And if we work together as a team, whether you're Republican, Democrat, independent, things will get done. So when you have the backbiting and the slanderous remarks and the trash throwing, it's when things don't get done the way they should. So again, congratulate each and every one of you candidates, because you did handle yourselves in a very good manner, as far as I'm concerned. And I thank each and every one of you. Congratulations to Mr. Gavin. I had the pleasure of attending the seniors' luncheon once again. And I want to thank Farinaz, Karen Corber, and her staff, and the Parks and Recreation staff for the work that they did for a fun-filled room with joy all around it this past week. And it was great. I want to thank our DPW and our Public Safety Department for the work, the extra work, the overtime work that they did this past few weeks with the snow. I had more compliments from people outside the city, or as many from inside, of the work that Berkeley does and the services we have. And I thank you. In an old tradition started by former Mayor O'Dwyer in Gaelic, and then city manager by Estesesa in Spanish, I will continue the tradition, the lone one, in Hebrew and say, "Chag, molad, sameach." Merry Christmas to everyone. Have a safe, happy, joyous New Year and prosperous 2018. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Henin?
Want to remind everyone, my first talk with Dennis will be tomorrow, Tuesday, December 19th, at the library from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And come by and ask your questions or let me know what's on your mind. And if you're lucky, I might have some homemade cookies left over for my wife if I don't finish them off tomorrow. So, I've noticed since our last meeting, the signs that Ms. Mateus shared with us, I haven't seen them around the city. And I wanted to thank staff for taking care of that. I also wanted to echo the thanks to all the people that applied for City Council. There's a lot of quality people there. And there are a lot of other volunteer opportunities, both in the city and with organizations, not, you know, directly related to the city, but, you know, in the city, that I hope, you know, we can see involvement there. And finally, I saw that they started working on the crosswalks across Coolidge today. I was very happy to see that. And so, looking forward to a safer passage to the library. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Your Honor. Quote from Henry Ford, who said, "Coming together is a beginning. Keeping together is progress. Working together is success." And again, it was coming together is a beginning. Keeping together is progress. And working together is success. As liaison to the DDA, it saddens me deeply to lose such talent as Ross Gavin as the treasurer. I've had the pleasure of seeing him in action through that lens and others. And I know our DDA director will be frantically working to it to fill that important slot, to keep our board whole. And as council member, I'm glad to welcome him aboard. I think he will bring, as mentioned, some good talent to the table. I'd like to also echo the sentiments. You guys were great. It was really, really tough to think this thing through. There's such great talent in here. The six that we had the opportunity to speak with and all of those who threw their hat into the ring. It's a bold step to do that. And I applaud their sincerity in helping serve us as fellow residents and neighbors. I think that is terrific. Continuing on the conversation around the DDA, it was a very successful series of Merry Month events, including most recently Dogs at, Dog Photos with Santa at the Berkeley Chop Shop. That was a lot of fun. And Santa had quite the patience to deal with all our crazy canine friends. The ugly sweatshirt contest was the very next day at the VFW. That was also very well-attended, if not a little gaudy, of an event there. Lots of blinky lights and all that fun stuff. And continuing the celebration, we, the winners of the window decorating contest were announced. And the winners go to, there's three of them. The Best Overall Window was awarded to Amici's Pizza and Living Room. The Best Use of a Holiday Song Theme is a tie between the Yellow Door Art Market and Catching Fireflies. And if you're familiar with those, it's no surprise that they are a tie there. It's gorgeous work. And the People's Choice Award, as nominated by us as residents and neighbors here, goes to The Wedding Shop, their new location on Coolidge. So congratulations to them all. We're very excited. Downtown is rolling out a new shopping and dining guide. This is a handy map that's going to be available. It's here at City Hall. We'll make it at the library. And we'll be distributing this throughout our downtown businesses. So this is a map of our, as its name implies, the shopping and dining. It shows all of the, you know, this is the corner district in Coolidge and all the great establishments that you can go to there. And on the other side shows all the terrific locations along 12 Mile. They're free. We hope that you take several and pass them out to your friends and family and encourage folks to come see all that we have to offer here in our fantastic downtown. Thanks to the DDA for all their work in bringing this together and all the great programs that are happening there. It's absolutely fantastic. As was mentioned, the crosswalk work is underway. And the left-hand turn at Coolidge and 11 Mile is moving forward as well. I know it's not just our project. We're coordinating with Hinton Woods and Oak Park as well and trying to get everything organized. Oh, traffic is important. I'm very much looking forward to that. And lastly, on the DDA front, I know this is a short list this time. The public input for the design guidelines is going to be set for mid to late January. The design guidelines are a way that we can help shape the look and feel of our downtown community, from the building styles and signs and lights and things. There's been a lot of work underway. And it's time for the most important work of all. And that's the feedback from the residents and the community to help ensure that the design guidelines reflect what we'd like to have in our downtown. Because these decisions will affect the infrastructure that we'll see for 20, 30 years to come. And so with that, I'd just like to also thank everybody again for a great year. Merry Christmas and happy holidays to you all. Have a safe and happy New Year as well. And looking forward to moving forward in the year to come. Thank you.
Councilmember Stedman?
Well, first of all, I want to thank all of the people who applied. Actually, there was 21, because one person got there sooner too late. And I just also want to remind you that we now have your name on a list. And there's always committees and boards and commissions that come up. And it would be... always committees and boards and commissions that come up, and it would be very, much appreciated if you would apply for them. And, you know, the irony of this November election was that there seemed to be some controversy and so on in the election, and we had a challenger that unseated a person that was here. But we, and we had 21 applicants. The irony, the irony of having 21 applicants is we had an incredibly low voter turnout, like from 13% in one, in one area to 24% and the high. So it averaged 18%. We've got to get our citizens out to vote. Everybody, this, it's the, it's the most important thing that you can do in your government is to vote. Everything else really doesn't matter if you don't vote. So I just want to say that to the citizens that are out there listening. I'm sure everybody in this, in this meeting voted, but it was just such an irony that we had so many people wanting to be involved in a physical way. And the other thing, I just want to wish you all a Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, whatever, whatever you're celebrating this holiday season, and a very happy and safe New Year.
Thank you. Councilmember Blanchard?
Again, reiterate that we had some fantastic candidates. I appreciate everybody and stay involved. Also, we have a diaper drive going on to support Judson Center. I don't know how long that goes on yet, but there are boxes in the city hall, public safety, the library, DPW, and I think Parks and Rec, where you can drop off diapers. It seems to me their goal was 3,000, something like that. So please participate in that if you can. I will touch a little bit about Christmas safety. Last Christmas morning at 3:15, I got paged out to go to a fire. And that's not a very pleasant thing when you see somebody's Christmas tree catch fire and their house burned down, or not burned down, but burns very badly, and the residents just barely escaped. So keep that in mind when you're hooking up Christmas lights. If you have a fireplace, don't put your tree next to the fireplace. There's a lot of common sense things, because I don't want to get paged out again to go fight another fire. So, you know, use common sense. Think about it, and be safe so you can come back and visit us next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baumgartner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple items for you. Just dates to keep in mind are up, the Christmas holiday, we'll have some holiday closures assigned to it, next Monday, as well as next Tuesday, the 25th and 26th, and then the following week, the 1st and the 2nd. The city offices will be closed on those days. And then after that, when we turn to the New Year, the Planning Commission is having an open house. This will be a, I'm sorry, a public hearing on the proposed planned unit development for La Sala, that'll be January 9th, in this room at 7:30, the Planning Commission's normal time. And then after that, there's also, the week after that, on January 16th, not in this room, but in the community center, we'll be having an open house to discuss the concept for the recreation center. And so we'll make a presentation for that. We'll have information stations, try to get everybody's questions answered, and then start what I'm sure will be a great discussion moving forward after that. So excited about both of those dates, excited for the conversation that I'm sure will flow out of both of those items. So those are the items I have, other than to say from all of the staff, Merry Christmas to the council and to those watching and attending. Whatever holiday you celebrate, we'll join you with it and wish you a good one.
Mr. Baumgartner, if you wouldn't mind, would you speak just for a minute about our new community development director?
Sure. Our new community development director actually started today, so we're giving a little bit of time to get their, to get their feet underneath them, but I've invited them to attend the next city council meeting to make an introduction as well. His name's Tim McLean. He joins us from, most recently, he was city manager of the city of Wayland, but he's got a great zoning background. He's got a great community development background. We look forward to him taking a very good methodical approach and continuing the process of recreating the community development department so that it's more reflective of the community, written right there into the title, and also can work hand-in-hand with residents on creating a path forward that I think we can all sort of gather around and be proud of. So this will be everything from ordinance revisions that would be proposed in the city council, to gearing up for the master plan process, probably starting next year. So a lot of good things ahead for this department, and I think we have the right gentleman in place to lead it.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney?
Nothing this evening, other than to extend holiday wishes to everybody, and best wishes for a happy, safe, and prosperous New Year.
Thank you. I want to go back to the beginning of the meeting. Mr. Wheeler, you were not here at the beginning of the meeting. I venture you heard that Mr. Smith has resigned from both the Planning Commission and the ZBA. And I just want you to know that there are no exceptions to volunteer members of the city, city council, boards, or commissions to say those things about residents at all. It's not something that will be tolerated. It's not something that really is, should ever even happen. We are, when you either are on a board or appointed to the board, you kind of give up your ability to just kind of be a resident, say whatever you want, whenever pops into your mind. You have to act in a respectful manner to everybody, whether you agree or disagree with them. And that, that didn't happen, and regardless of how frustrated somebody gets, that's not an excuse. And if it happened with anybody up here, it would be the same thing. So I hope that you did hear that. And, you know, this goes, you know, I may be talking to the residents right now, but I actually want to, I want the members of our boards and commissions to actually hear You have volunteered, and we certainly appreciate you volunteering your time and your talents and your energy to serve on the various boards and commissions of the city. But it's not always going to be candy canes and rainbows, and sometimes residents are going to say things that maybe you don't agree with. But when you accepted that position and you signed that ethics ordinance, you also accepted that you need to act in a respectful manner to all the residents, whether that's size, eye-rolling, all of the above. There are many times when, you know, residents say something that maybe we don't agree or disagree with. It doesn't matter. It's their right to say what they want, as long as they are saying it in a respectful manner. They have every right to say it. And that's part of why I ended some of the comments earlier, because I didn't want it to get into a back and forth. I wanted to allow some of the interested parties to have a say, but there's no reason to divulge into name-calling and, you know, whatever, any insinuations or slandering anybody. So I apologize on behalf of me. I know Mr. Smith said that earlier. Mr. Smith served the city for a long time very well, but those types of errors are not going to be tolerated. So you have my apologies. I'm sorry that you had to deal with that, and that was said. Now, happy holidays, Merry Christmas. Hope everybody has some time off. Enjoy some time with your family. With that, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Councilmember Kedekel, with support from Councilmember Blanchard. Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on the last meeting of 2017?
Kedekel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Hannon?
Yes.
And Terbrecht?
Yes. The December 18th, 2017 city council meeting has been adjourned.